I'm pleased today that we do have Reverend Ann Cummings here with us. She will be providing our invocation and she is with Mount Zion United Methodist Church. The invocation will be followed by the pledge and I hope that Captain Michael Pickett is here from Fire and he is with Station 17 Seashift. For those of you who are willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. God of justice, peace, and mercy, you were the one who hovered over the waters at creation and brought order out of chaos. And in your image, we do our best to bring order to the chaos of our world. Each of these commissioners followed a call to serve their community in this way by making laws, setting policies, stewarding the resources in our county. And we are grateful that they said yes to that call because it is not easy work. They said yes to standing up for democracy, to working for a just and safe community for all. They said yes because they care about Cobb County. But they also said yes to heated debates, contentious meetings, and I'm sure some nasty phone calls and hate mail that they do not deserve. Lord bless them in their work. Remind each of them that leadership is not about hardness or telling people what to do or wielding power, but about servanthood, compassion, and love. God, remind them and remind all of us that good leaders aren't perfect. They are broken, messy humans who are trying to love well and serve well. Inspire each of us to lead by listening, connecting, sacrificing, serving, and loving. God, it is election season in our country and we feel so divided right now. There is so much anger and fear of the other. Let Cobb County be a place where we recognize our diversity, honor it, and choose to love each other even when it is hard. May we lay down our assumptions about the neighbor that has that sign in their yard. May we resist the temptation to reduce those we disagree with to a snarky meme. And instead, let us approach each other with genuine curiosity and empathy. In the words of John Wesley, "If we may not think alike, may we love alike." And let that love move us to care for those in our region affected by the hurricanes. Let resources pour out of Cobb County to each community in need. Let that love inspire us to join together in prayer for peace in Palestine and Israel and Ukraine and in every other country torn apart by violence. And may that love give us the fire to continue working towards justice, freedom, and equity for all in our communities. Inspire us and sustain us in our work against the epidemics of racism, gun violence, and xenophobia that continue to tear us apart. Lord, if we may not think alike, may we love alike. In the name of the one who creates, redeems, and sustains all of creation, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, thank you for that very powerful invocation and very timely. With that, I call this meeting to order. We have five presentations before you today and the first one will be brought by our county manager.
Good morning Chairwoman and Commissioners. I too echo what a beautiful, beautiful prayer that was. And I pray that everyone's family is well and will be well. So I'm always excited to start off our meeting recognizing some of the accomplishments of our departments. And today, I'm here to recognize our Procurement Services Department for receiving the 2024 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement. And if they would come up, I'll read the reason why they were recognized nationally. The National Procurement Institute, known as NPI, founded in 1968, is a nonprofit organization that serves public procurement professionals both nationally and internationally. It is the largest accrediting body for procurement organizations in the United States, local and state governments. NPI was established, or is the established Achievement Excellence in Procurement Award in 1995 to recognize organizational excellence in procurement based on standardized criteria in innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, and leadership. Roger, thank you for all that you do and your team and for bringing this award to Cobb County. The accreditation application is a rigorous process, as I understand. Extensive documentation is required. And evaluation of this focuses not only on practical work, but also on the contributions that further advance public procurement in and of itself and the profession. So on the 22nd of July of this year, the county was notified that the AEP Award application was successful and that Cobb is one of 198 successful applicants this year and one of only 11 recipients in the state of Georgia. Congratulations to you and your team. And if anyone from the board would like to stand and be a part of the award presentation or come down and say a few words, please do.
Yes, what an amazing group. These folks, I can tell you, they make me look good. We set out two years ago to put in place an aggressive two-year procurement modernization initiative. And this trophy today just represents the fact that we've arrived there. This is the pinnacle. And so thank you to the group for your hard work and efforts. Thank you as well to my boss Sharon Stanley, who's been a champion of our efforts to modernize procurement. And thank you to our county manager. She's been a champion at the executive level. Thank you to our chairwoman and the board for your leadership. And thank you for carving out space on the agenda this morning to recognize this special award for us. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you and to you, Roger. I can tell you, I know you do a lot of work because we do a lot of business in Cobb County. And to imagine with all the business that we do, you are the team that gets it done. And you get it done in a way that's fair, in a way that's equitable, in a way that sends a message about who we are as a county. And we make it easy for people to want to do business with us. And I hear that all the time with people that do business throughout the metro area that when it comes to Cobb County, we're one of the places that is preferred. And I know it's because of each and every one of you and how you treat each person that comes before you. So thank you for making us look good. Roger, Stephanie, thank you for your leadership, particularly with the very aggressive work that we know that's been done in the past two years and the work that will continue. And all of this again is about making sure that Cobb is open for business for everyone. And just thank you for all you do in that vein.
Okay, for those of you who are here as a part of the proclamation for Cobb County Police, please join me up front. Good morning. Please, it's okay to stand in front of the pumpkins. We won't all make it. They are quiet, festive. Good morning. Good morning. Today Cobb County has reached a significant milestone that I'm pleased to have the opportunity to share with you via this proclamation. In 1924, the first Cobb County Police operating separately from the sheriff's office started working in Cobb on an ad hoc basis. In 1936, the first two full-time county patrolmen were hired. And whereas in 1943, the formal title of Cobb County Police Department was approved by the Board of Commissioners and Esmer C. Ward was named the first chief of police. And whereas the Cobb County Police Department has continued to evolve over the years with the inception of major departmental changes to better serve residents. In 1959, the first motorcycle unit was formed. The department switched to a precinct system of manpower allocation in 1974 by adding a second precinct in Mableton. The SWAT team was formed in 1977 and the DUI task force was formed in 1982. The Cobb County Public Safety Training Center opened in 1995. And in 1999, the Cobb County Police Academy received post-accreditation to train and certify police recruits in its own mandate training academy. In 2021, the department headquarters moved to a five-story building at 545 South Fairground Street. And its real-time crime center was established using state-of-the-art technology and has been recognized as a model for the use and practice of integrated technology across the nation. And throughout the 100 years, the department recognized and cherished the sacrifices of six members who were killed in the line of duty. This includes Lieutenant John Hood, Officer Drew Brown, Officer Robert Ingram, Sergeant Steve Reeves, Officer Stephen Gilner, and Officer James Freddie Norman. Steve Reeves, Officer Stephen Gilner, and Officer James Freddie Norman. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize and honor the 100 years of dedicated services by the Cobb County Police Department to residents and visitors. We appreciate the steadfast professional service exemplified through men and women of this highly respected police agency. This the eighth day of October 2024. Congratulations.
And good morning, everybody. I'm Deputy Chief Ben Cohen. Sorry, Chief Ben Hooger can't be here. He is sick and has the funk and can't speak. I just want to say a few words on behalf of the Police Department. It doesn't matter what we wear, it doesn't matter how long we've been here, the character of the officers that work here every day make this department as great as it is. This proclamation, thank you Chairwoman and Commissioners and Dr. McMorris. It's an honor, and I do want to kind of take a little bit of a step off and give this Lieutenant Holt, who kind of spearheaded this whole historical, and give him a minute or two to speak.
All right, first of all, I want to apologize. 14 years in the Marine Corps, 16 years in law enforcement, I am not a public speaker. But I'd like to say, we started from humble beginnings. We were considered road and bridge inspectors who worked for the Commissioner of Roads and Revenues in the early 1900s. It was in the early 1920s where we really started being called police officers or county police, and then the term county policeman came in. It's kind of a funny story how we really started. The calls from the public came when we started having issues with vagrants and lawbreakers coming from over the Chattahoochee River from Fulton County, and that's how we really got started. And we developed from there. In 1936, we really started coming into our own. We had our own uniform. We had a slight county budget at that point, but really in 1943, it was January 5th, 1943, where the county commissioners saw a fit to actually name the Cobb County Police Department, and that's where we actually have our first SOPs and policies. They named our chief, our three officers, and budget and pay in those county commission notes. And for the last 80 years, we've been honored to serve the Cobb County citizens, and it's been an honor and a pleasure. We've come a long way, we've developed a long way, and we've gone from two road and bridge inspectors with a population of less than 30,000 to 650 men and women who honorably served this county. It's 800,000 residents, multiple international and national corporations, a major sports athletic team, and a major university, and we are proud to serve each and every one of you. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm proud of each and every one of the men and women who served with the Cobb County Police Department. I think it's one of the finest departments certainly in Georgia and, I think, in the nation. The commitment and dedication and service they give on a daily basis is just phenomenal. I appreciate the leadership, and I appreciate the hard work. Thank you.
Very good. We'll take a picture. We'll probably need to double row, and I would ask for the Commissioners to stand to be a part of the picture as well.
Tell our officers from the back, please.
Yes, sir.
Those. Three, two, one. One time. Thank you. Those of you who are here as part of National Veterinary Technician Week in Cobb County,
Good morning. Thank you for being here. It is a great honor to present this proclamation, whereas veterinary technicians play a crucial role in ensuring the health and well-being of animals entrusted to the care of Cobb County Animal Services. They help care for these once-in-future pets, making it possible for them to find their proper homes, and whereas these technicians provide indispensable support to veterinarians by administrating medications, conducting laboratory tests, assisting with surgeries, and performing a variety of critical tasks, and whereas the commitment and expertise of veterinary technicians greatly contributes to the overall health and welfare of the animals in Cobb County Animal Services care. They aid in the prevention of disease, stopping overpopulation, and increase the comfort of these companions in our care. And whereas Veterinary Technician Week serves as an opportunity to acknowledge and appreciate the hard work, dedication, and invaluable contributions of this profession and the entire veterinary team. And therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby declare October 13th through 19th of 2024 as Veterinary Technician Week and recognize their essential importance to the well-being of our community. This the eighth day of October 2024.
Well, first, thank you, Commissioner Gamble. Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. It's a great honor to be able to recognize these folks. They're some of our unsung heroes at the shelter. You don't ever see them, you don't ever hear from them, it's because we keep them locked in the back, but they are a very integral part of our team. Dr. Blue, our county veterinarian, Michelle Hartline, our veterinary services supervisor, Ben Striker, one of our vet techs, and Adrian Johnson, he is our veterinary assistant extraordinaire. So we've got to... It's okay. As long as you feed him, he's great. So they do a lot of work that nobody knows, and so some of the numbers they work with, over 5,000 exams on animals this year, about 1,900 spineuter surgeries, over 2,000 rabies vaccinations. In addition to the animals that come into the shelter, they also provide care for the Police Department canines, the Sheriff's Department canines, Fire Department canines, and also Rose, the comfort dog with the District Attorney's Office. And we don't do horses, sorry. But they are a very integral part of our team. We're very proud of the work they do, and it's especially appreciated that we're able to honor them today. So thank you.
All right, next up, I'd like to call up those who are here with the McCollum Field. Please join Commissioner Burrell up front.
Good morning, everyone. It's an honor to present this. 64 years in operation, the Cobb County International Airport at McCollum Field. We have Drew Wrestler, our DOT Director, Morgan Simmons, our Transportation Deputy Director, Wes McDonald, and Steven Spencer at Cobb County International Airport. So I have served on the Advisory Board for the past six or seven years, and so I'm in the trenches with these guys every other month when we have our meetings, and we had a tour yesterday of the ARF truck that is with the Fire Department that puts out foam fires if they occur at the airport. And Steven can speak more to that as far as we're one of the few that have that service at our airport. And we also toured the tower, and you can see Kennesaw Mountain, you can see Sweat Mountain, you can see all over the area from the tower. It was really quite an experience. So, whereas Cobb County International Airport, McCollum Field, celebrated its 64th anniversary on September 4th, 2024, and at its grand opening in 1960, nearly 3,000 people attended, including U.S. Senator Herman Talmadge, actress Susan Hayward, and the airport's namesake, Commissioner Herbert C. McCollum. And whereas, although officially known as the Cobb County International Airport since 2015, the airport will always affectionately be known as McCollum Field. And whereas, since its opening, the airport has become the fifth busiest in Georgia, with a reputation as one of the leading airports of its size in the country. The airport averages 350 takeoffs and landings daily, with more than 100,000 flight operations each year. And whereas, the Cobb County Airport is home to more than 300 aircraft with 500,000 square feet of hangar space. It hosts 20 businesses that offer services such as flight instruction, aircraft management, maintenance, and charters. And whereas, the airport plays a crucial role in the local economy and connects Cobb County residents and businesses to the world. Its on-site U.S. Customs and Border Protection facility supports international arrivals. Located 20 miles northwest of Atlanta, it also offers convenient access to the region's interstates and major highways. And now, therefore, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners proudly recognizes Cobb County International Airport at McCollum Field for its 64 years of growth and success, and celebrates the significant anniversary. This the eighth day of October 2024. Congratulations.
Just a few words. Commissioner, thank you so much for your service to the airport, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, also for your support. Built in just six months, 64 years ago, the airport has grown into what it is today, serving or providing 1,000 jobs throughout the community, over $100 million worth of economic impact. There's $3 billion worth of aircraft based at the airport. We have operations everywhere from public safety, when we look at Georgia State Patrol, and lifeflight, to additionally some flight schools, and home to corporate jets that allow for those jobs to come to Cobb County. So incredibly proud of the airport, glad to be able to serve alongside these folks, to steward that great asset that it is for Cobb County. So thank you, Commissioner, for this recognition.
Anybody else? All righty, and finally, those who are here as a part of designating October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, please join Commissioner Sheffield up front. How are you guys this morning? Good morning, good morning. Hi, good morning. I'm well, how are you? Good, it's good to see you. Whereas, according to the American Cancer Society, more than 310,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in 2024 in the United States, and more than 42,000 women will die from the disease. Women in our country get breast cancer more often than any other type of cancer except for skin cancer. It is second only to lung cancer as a cause of cancer deaths in women. And whereas, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month helps educate women about the importance of early detection for breast cancer and promotes mammographies as the most effective tool for detection. Early detection and treatment have increased the five-year relative survival rate for women diagnosed with breast cancer to 90%. However, many women do not conduct physical breast exams, and many 40 and older do not get examined as regular intervals. And whereas, many health organizations continue to support innovative awareness programs, scientific research, and education. We urge educators, service providers, research, and advocacy groups to work together to develop ways to educate the public about breast cancer and ensure all women have access to appropriate breast cancer screening services. And whereas, Cobb and Douglas Public Health is committed to ensuring low-income women who are uninsured or underinsured receive access to breast and cervical cancer screenings. Last year, the agency diagnosed 34 women with breast cancer through their program services. And therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and further acknowledges October 18th, 2024, as Breast Cancer Awareness and Pinkout Day in Cobb County. This the eighth day of October 2024. Thank you so much, Commissioner. I'm Lisa Crossman with Cobb and Douglas Public Health, and have Dawn Crawwinkle and Eve Velazquez here with us from Public Health. They lead our Breast and Cervical Cancer Prevention and Awareness Program. I would tell you that many people have gotten a bit complacent about their annual physicals, and so please use this month as an excuse to go to your primary care doctor, your GYN for your annual checkup, and/or to come to Public Health so that we can help you. We want to make sure that early detection is foremost on everyone's mind.
Thank you. I'm Jatann Gibson, Agency Director of Public Services for Cobb County, and I want to say, for many of you know, some of you don't know, this is my 10th year being a breast cancer survivor. So this is very important to me. It was in my family as well. My mom is a survivor, and my sister as well. But I would like to ask that you take this month, if you don't wear pink, try find one day out of the month to wear pink, and remember, this goes beyond October. It's all months of the year, all days of the year, and also to men. To men, we talked a lot about women, but men can also be diagnosed with breast cancer. Just remember that.
Good morning. Michael Brantley with Cobb County Parks. Just want to give you a couple of programs that we're looking at. One is Cobb Goes Pink, which is October 17th. We're going to have a little brunch for our employees and any of our loved ones of our employees or families, mostly to honor, educate, and inspire some of our Cobb County employees, such as Dr. Gibson that have gone through that battle, that their colleagues are with them the entire way. So October 17th, 9:30 a.m., we're going to do it at Jim R. Miller Event Center, and then on October 18th, next day on Friday, is the Pinkout for Cobb County. So all Cobb County employees are encouraged to wear pink on that Friday in support of breast cancer awareness. on that Friday in support of breast cancer awareness.
That concludes our presentation portion of this meeting. And we are now at our public hearing tab. And we will have one item presented from DOT.
Good morning again. Drew Wrestler, DOT. The department has one public hearing for your consideration this morning. In accordance with state law, the board is required to conduct a public hearing prior to expending county funds of $100,000 or more to employ an independent consultant or consulting firm or to conduct an independent study or survey. To implement the five upcoming 2022 SPOS TIP projects, included on the attached list, the department anticipates awarding engineering design contracts that could exceed $100,000 for each project. Therefore, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for engineering design services for five 2022 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program projects.
Thank you. For those of you who'd like to participate in this public hearing, know that we open this up to any speaker and that you will have a maximum of three minutes to address this matter and this matter only to the Board of Commissioners. With that, I'll go ahead and open up this public hearing.
Good morning. My name's Craig Harfoot. All these things that you're spending money on studies, like you've already started with Accenture. It's all front-running, something that's on the ballot that hasn't even passed. And it's like, why are we spending all these monies on studies for things that haven't even passed? It's almost like you know it's going to win because it's rigged. Because since electronic voting, no SPOS has ever failed. And it's like, why is that? Because the only person that would challenge an election is a candidate. A tax doesn't challenge itself. And it's just beyond belief that you keep... Any of these projects, you should have over 50% of the community asking for it before you even make a move to do it. But it doesn't work that way. You've got the people that want the money from building these projects, planning these projects. And it's like the tail wagging the dog. You know, we're the taxpayers, but you're spending our money. And it's not democracy. It definitely is not democracy. And it's like your historical police thing. They, people asked for it, okay? What? To keep people coming across the river, the border of Cobb County? To me, that was, that was real enlightening, this little display you had today. You know, I like that. No, because history repeats itself. And we have a national crisis now at a border. But the SPOS thing, you just gotta, you gotta quit front-running this stuff. You can't spend the money before things pass. It looks bad. It looks like it's all rigged. And you know, and that is very bad optics for a county, a state government, a federal government. Very bad optics. And really, you should not pass this. You know, you shouldn't do anything that frontruns a tax that hasn't happened, that you're actually campaigning for, which is illegal by the state constitution. You're not allowed to use taxpayers' money to campaign for taxes. And yet you do. Cobb County's done it. You know, and the one thing I noticed, David Hankerson, he was the only one that honestly answered a question. I asked all the board members at the time, who was doing the redevelopment powers law? Every one of them go, I don't know, I don't know. He goes, it's the Chamber of Commerce. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll take any additional speaker, but I want to clarify that this agenda item or this public hearing is with respect to the 2022 SPOS that has already passed. This is to provide engineering services, engineering design services for the SPOS in 2022 that the voters voted on in 2020. So we will take any additional speakers to address that matter and that matter only, and you'll have a total of three minutes to do so. Not seeing any additional speakers. Commissioners, do any of you have questions for Drew? Yes, we do have a question.
Drew, there's a list in the book of the five projects that are being designed in the TIP program. So do you want to talk to that?
I'd be glad to. The first three here are thorough state local match improvements that were provided out of that program that also include a congressionally-directed spending amount. George Busby Parkway Corridor, Allstate Powder Springs Road Trail, and Oakdale Road Complete Streets Bridge Replacement. And then there are two sidewalk projects, Schaefer Road Sidewalk, East Callaway Road Sidewalk. This public hearing is for those five projects to allow us to proceed into procurement of engineering design services for those, just for those five projects.
Thank you. Which is nothing to do with the mobility SPOS.
That's correct.
Are there any other questions for Drew? Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
That now takes us to our first public comment.
As the board provides the podium for public comments, appropriate to review those related meeting rules, please state your name. And if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. Comments should not be slanderous. The board encourages, regardless of the topic for the audience, to be respectful and courteous to all speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And there is a timer on the podium to keep track of your three minutes. And the first public speaker is Samuel Foster.
Hi, Sam Foster. So I was driving down Powder Springs Street the other day, pretty normal experience. And I came across a section of the road where there was no sidewalk. Again, a pretty normal experience by Cobb County standards. But that day, I saw something I hadn't seen before. While I came across that section of the road with no sidewalk, I saw a mother pushing her child in her stroller in the street next to the section where there's no sidewalk in the little one-to-two-foot paved shoulder on the road. This is a road where people are going 50, 60, sometimes 70 miles an hour. And if somebody had made one mistake, if they hadn't paid attention for a section, she could have died. When I come to these meetings, especially with the referendum that's happening, we constantly hear arguments from the other side pertaining to some things that don't exist in reality, some things that do. But I never hear anyone talk about the costs that the same people we're arguing that we're defending, working people, the costs that they're actually paying right now for our current transportation system. The woman that I saw on that street, she's not paying a 7% sales tax, but she is paying a cost. And that cost is the cost that many other people are paying as well as herself, the cost of her safety. And in some cases, people are paying at the cost of their lives. When we talk about improving our communities to make them safer, we're approaching it from a standpoint where it's not just about people who are taking the bus. It's not just about people who are driving. It's about people who are getting around in every single way that they possibly could. And I like that this plan that we're proposing does that. Includes multi-use trail funding, includes sidewalk funding, includes improvement for people who drive, and includes improvements for people who drive as well, safety at intersections. If you drive throughout the county on many major roads, what you'll see is not only people who are putting themselves in danger when they're walking, biking, or taking the bus in some instances, you'll also see memorials on pretty much every major road marking places where drivers have died. Our system is unsafe not only for people who don't have cars, it's unsafe for people who do have cars. And when we start to think of mobility in that aspect, where we're trying to approach it from all angles, it's something that I would gladly vote for and I encourage everyone else to vote for. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Christine Rosman.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Christine Rosman. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and behalf on other Georgians, particularly in South Georgia, that didn't fare so well during Hurricane Helene. I have a friend that's an EMT down there, and it's a freaking disaster. And it's very frightening to hear these stories that you can't even believe that are happening, like GMA not being on it, FEMA not being on it, not only in Georgia, but in Tennessee, in North Carolina. And but for the grace of God, I mean, I have freaking survivor's guilt because that should have come right through Atlanta, come right through Marietta. And how would we have been prepared? How would we have been prepared? And I'm wondering, all the millions of dollars that we spend on making sure that everybody's DEI compliant and all the tens of millions of dollars that we spend on, what, Accenture and Deloitte and Chrysalis? Am I saying that right, Kevin? Is it Chrysalis? Chrysalis? He's my thought police over there. Anyway, all that money, did that prepare us? Would that prepare a community for something like this? Or because I'm thinking that like being prepared to be politically correct when you have a catastrophe isn't the best way to spend our money. And you have a choice. You have a choice of what to do. But actually, I sometimes think you're not at choice because I think sometimes it's basically you're kind of following the agenda, whether it's Accenture, Deloitte, if it's the ARC, if it's the DNC. You're kind of listening to some higher group of people because the, pretty much the citizens are kind of on the back burner. And when our federal government sends, what is it? $157 million over to Lebanon, yet the recovery in FEMA gets like $2 million for Helene? How about that whole thing of like, put your own oxygen masks on first? Take care of your own people? Are we prepared to take care of our own people when all this virtue signaling is the priority of some of this board and the county? I'm just curious. Because I'm thinking there's no ROI on that DEI.
The next public speaker is Tracy Stevenson.
Tracy is approaching. I don't know if Cassie is here. But if you're interested in learning about what Cobb does for emergency management, she'll be more than glad to talk to you about it. And she's at the back of the room. Yes, Tracy.
Good morning. Madam Chairwoman, I was struck a couple of weeks ago when we had the civility conversation about a story you told prior to your involvement in county government. There was a man that kept coming up and saying the same thing at every meeting. You listened to that and you said, you know, that's very interesting, and I wonder why he does that. And then some point in time later, a year or two later, I guess you ran for office and made it into office. And he came up and spoke, and you took the time to speak to him afterwards and started to champion his cause. I was struck by that, and I've thought about it many times over the last couple of weeks. I know I personally have come up here and spoken against taxes at virtually every meeting, that's twice a month for over a year, as well as many other people. During the tax increase hearings, not that I was keeping hard score, but in '23's tax increase hearings, there were, I believe, 37 against and 3/4. I don't think you listened to us then. At this latest one, it was 20-something, again, I think about two, 20-some against, about two people for. So I was struck that exactly when did you quit listening? Because we've been talking to you. A lot of people are suffering now, and now we're in the MSPOS deal. There aren't too many people, I think, that have a lot of interest in it. Your data sources are less than 2,000 emails and less than 2,000 internet responses. And a lot of people have spoken against it. And it's not that we're against transit. We're against this particular transit. It's too big a bite, too fast. We just went from a $29 million a year budget in transit to $38 million, 31% increase in one budget cycle. Lots of reasons, lots of excuses why. But let's just amplify that if all of a sudden our budget is three to 10 times that every month. You know, are we really paying attention to what's going on? I'm a big proponent of fixing what we have first and building upon that. When I had my business in Raleigh, North Carolina, I networked our computer systems. I had an MIT graduate friend of mine. Nobody was doing it then. And he says, well, first of all, do you have a system that works on paper? And I said, yes, I do. He said, good. Because if you didn't, I'm going to screw this up royally. I will exponentially destroy your company. That's what I'm worried about now with transit. Too much, too fast, not enough data. I've begged for good data, we don't have it. Your Transit Advisory Board knows it, you know it. The data is loose, it's full of just projections and guesses. So once again, I'm just here speaking against MSPOS. I hear Sam, I like what Sam has to say about some things, but it won't be all things to all people. Thank you.
The next public speaker is Craig Harfoot.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Craig Harfoot. My topic is death and taxes. Long time ago, I saw the movie Meet Joe Black. But this is, we're in the heart of death and taxes. We have just spent trillions of dollars on COVID, and it's debatable whether we should have even done it. Now we're in this weather cycle from the solar cycle 25 of the sun. And they still act like it's CO2, but it's the sun. All energy comes from the sun. And the power of the hurricanes, all sun-driven, solar flares, they're happening right now. Watch for more weather. The thing about, it's time for regime change in Washington and local. This narrative that my body, my choice, thou shall not kill. The idea that it's somebody's right to kill their unborn baby, there's no basis in Judeo-Christian law for that at all. It's like life is a gift. And in the '50s, when abortion was totally illegal, they still occurred. They also had a lot of adopted people. And I mean, personally, I have my best friend. If abortion was prevalent, he would have been gone. His parents were not, were young, they didn't... They got pregnant, and because of the stigma, they adopted him out. And in the 20s, when we were in our 20s, he starts wandering about all this and starts searching for his birth parents. And he eventually found them. And they, turns out, he had a whole lot of brothers and sisters, and he was the first. But if mom had aborted him, he wouldn't exist. And he's a great guy, he's a great person. And in my own family, I've known this to be the case. And there are a lot of love childs. But you know, we just, you know, and then I was looking up statistics real quick, and they're saying, well, the last one they got was in 2021. It was like 625,000 reported. It was like 625,000 reported. And, but all those unborn fetuses, where'd they go? They go to stem cell research. Now that's really macabre, you know, really not good. And
Mr. Harford, your time's up. The next public speaker is Monica Delancey.
Monica Delancey. First, we'd like to recognize that October, well, September 15th to October 15th is National Hispanic Awareness Month. Also, we'd like to send prayers down the floor that's prepared for another hurricane. That is my home state. That's where I was born. Also, we'd like to invite everyone to attend the Renters' Rights Summit that will be held this Saturday, October the 12th, at Antioch Loving Spirit Church in Mapleton, Georgia. It's open to everyone, not just renters. The purpose of the Renters' Rights Summit is to provide resources on how to make, not just complaints, but awareness about code enforcement. A number of apartment complexes and rental homes are suffering from maintenance neglect. Maintenance neglect is very prevalent in the South Cobb areas. A lot of older apartments are getting old. And when the corporate landlords are brought to attention about maintenance neglect, they'll sell their properties and then start over again. And then what they'll do, they'll bully residents who are speaking up and say they're not going to renew your lease. But people still can speak up who don't live with those properties. So it's important that the community know that you're welcome all over. Kennesaw area has a lot of apartment complexes. In 20 years, they're going to be aging. So we need to get on top of this early. In addition to that, we want to thank Commissioner Sheffield for coming out to speak at the Renters' Rights Summit on Saturday. We'll be providing resources, how to navigate resources, but to discuss concrete resolutions. Not just seeking out rental assistance, but also let it be known that WorkSource Cobb will be coming to the area. How to seek specialized careers. We're all going to be talking about people need to join up together. Stop all this paying rent, $1,500 over here, $1,500 over there. We're going to have to join up together, okay? We're going to be making real, concrete solutions, not just we're going to call up rental agencies every other month and say, how can you help me pay my rent? No, we're not going to do that. But when we leave the Renters' Rights Summit, like I said, invitations invited for everyone to attend. We're going to be empowered. We're going to know that from 1 to 5 o'clock, just like I said, presentations from our commissioner. I understand that our district attorney will be attending. We have an educator that's going to be attending about, do a presentation about the impact of housing and education. Again, the Renters' Rights Summit will start at 1:00 PM on Saturday, October the 12th, at Antioch Loving Spirit Church, 6280 Britt Road, Mapleton, Georgia. And we'll end at 5:00. There's a firm start time and a firm stop time because we know the Saturdays can be very busy. Again, Monica Delancey, and thank you very much.
That's our last public speaker.
Thank you, Bill. That takes us to our consent agenda. The matters on the consent agenda, we're scrolling before the meeting and we'll scroll afterwards. Just going to review it and see if I have any changes marked here. Okay, please note that Agenda Item Number 18 with respect to the Cope House has been withdrawn. And that's the only change I have noted on consent. Commissioners Burl and Gabbro, would you like to recognize your statement before we vote? Okay.
Yes, I would like to submit my statement for the record and just highlight the last sentence. We all took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States. The state of Georgia and Cobb County follow the law.
And I have a new statement I would like read into the record. While the county responded on October 3rd of 2024 to many allegations made in a recent legal challenge filed in Superior Court on September 18th of 2024, no mention was made that these allegations were irrelevant to the action taken by the board to provide notice to the commissioner did not meet the qualifications for Section 223B of our local enabling legislation. The Agenda Item Number 46 for August 25th and September 10th of 2024 were only to deem the office vacant and were not included in the county's response. Yet the complaint states the board voted to fill the vacancy. This is a false statement as the Agenda's recommendations clearly stated, quote, "The Board of Commissioners approves notice to the District Two Commissioner that the office is deemed vacant per Part II, Section 223B, Official Code of Cobb County, Georgia, and authorizes the chairwoman to execute notice pursuant to OCGA 4551 and any other necessary documents for said purpose," end quote. Under careful review of 4551, it is two-pronged. A, addresses vacated offices, and B, there's more to this, but it states, "The decision of the officer or body to fill the vacancy or call an election to fill the vacancy shall be subject to an appeal by, to the Superior Court." The Board of Commissioners did not approve to fill the vacancy, nor did we call for an election. Therefore, the complaint should be dismissed. The county provided no equitable estoppel argument advanced as to a result of the actions by the Board of Commissioners in moving forward with an ultra-virus passage of the Home Rule map. The Home Rule action was precipitated by an illegal action through the Act of Three Commissioners to confect and move forward with a scheme which was illegal in inception and act which, which Commissioners now claim their term should extend beyond December 31st of 2024. This response, coupled with the county attorney's office unwillingness to rescind the Home Rule Resolution votes of October 11th and 25th of 2022, raises continued questions as to the representation and advice provided to me as your commissioner and representative in matters pertaining to Home Rule. The county regularly uses outside counsel to present, to represent the interest of the county in matters as simple as motor vehicle accidents. I respectfully request that the county, Cobb County Attorney's Office be removed from this legal action and outside counsel represent the county in all matters pertaining to Home Rule going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I know that's a lot to unpack. A lot of this has been discussed in prior meetings, inclusive of our executive session. There were some legal things that I think are more appropriate for our county attorney to respond to.
Certainly. We filed an answer to the complaint regarding the appeal. Briefing, we've asked for briefing to start. We haven't gotten a direction from the court yet when briefing will start. A lot of those issues that the Commissioner referenced would be taken care of during briefing. They're not appropriate for answers. There is no equitable estoppel argument at all. The county, the Commissioners acted appropriately when they took their actions.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, Commissioners, are there any other comments with respect to the consent agenda?
I'd like the clerk to note that I do not support Agenda Item Number 15.
Okay.
I don't support Item Number 24 regarding condemnation.
Okay, let me, let me do this one at a time. Commissioner Gabbro is Item 15 and 24 is, okay, 24 is on the regular agenda, Commissioner?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. So the Commission concerned with respect to 15, that is with respect to the multi-year breeze system for MARTA. Okay, are there any other concerns with respect to the consent agenda? Okay, with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the items that are on our consent agenda as it has been revised, with the exception of Item 18, which has been pulled from the agenda. And again, acknowledging Commissioner Gabbro's opposition to Agenda Item Number 15. I further authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Second, all right, is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. That now takes us to the regular portion of this meeting. And the first matter up is from the county manager's office.
Morning Chairwoman, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. Our item this morning is for the board to approve the Cobb County opioid abatement strategy as presented by the Opioid Abatement Advisory Council to assist the county in distributing opioid settlement funding. Significant national opioid settlements have been occurring over the last few years. We have been a part of those settlements based on approval by the Board of Commissioners. One of the conditions of those settlements is that we create an advisory council to assist us in distributing those funds. Back in April, you created the council and in May, you populated it with a group of very hardworking people, I have come to realize over the last few months. And we are presenting to you today, from that council, the strategy by which we will expend those funds. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Nick Adams to come up and give you a brief synopsis of that strategy and then I'll come back with a recommendation as soon as he's finished.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Like the Deputy County Manager said, we have created the OP based on your recommendations and we appreciate your support up to this point. I would like to say that the members at council have been working very hard, meeting more than monthly in order to try to hurry this process along. I'd like to recognize those members now, if you'd allow me. If you're in the, in the audience, in the part of the opioid abatement advisory council, if you'd please stand. With us today, we have Lieutenant Colonel Stacy Baines, Christopher Hansard, Dr. Kimberly Henderson, Melanie Dallas, and a non-voting member, Jim McGeezy. Unfortunately, not with us is Holly Touchman, Pete Keonis, and Blake Schneider. But we'd like, I'd like to thank them for their hard work on this, this issue. Also, we've been receiving a lot of support from the Department of Public Health, Lisa Crosspin and Lori Jowdy, and non-advisory members from Buddy T. Sir and Lauren Bruce. So we thank them very much for their assistance in this, this important strategy. So what the council has done up to this point is that we have done listening sessions with the greater strategic councils that we've also opened up to public comment. And we've determined through those listening sessions and the work of the advisory council that we've made the comprehensive strategic plan on how to expend these funds, which we have presented to you. With that comprehensive strategic plan, we'd like to expend 42% of the funding towards treatment, 22% of the funding through prevention programs, 21% of the funding through recovery support services, and 15% of the funding through harm reduction. Once we start the application process, we intend to have a 90-day session to take applications. And the advisory council will then start evaluating the applications to present to you. Any questions on any of that?
No questions. Again, appreciate the fact that there was public outreach and so many people have helped to develop this plan. It is quite substantive and if you can indulge me, I have these sheets here. I'm wondering if we could just put them on the screen, just so people can see what's included in those sections. Thank you. Cobb likes to be a leader, but one thing we don't like to be is a leader in the impact that opioid abuse has had on our community. And we've even had a number of deaths where Cobb has been a leader in that for the state of Georgia. And so to me, it's quite impressive just how comprehensive and detailed a strategic plan we have moving forward to address this. On that page is our vision and the vision is to reduce and mitigate opioid-related harm, save lives, support recovery, and to restore communities across Cobb County. And to achieve that vision by implementing targeted evidence-based strategies that specifically address the needs of individuals affected by opioid use disorder. And at the bottom of the screen, you can see the first task associated with treatment services. And Jimmy, if you can go to that second page as well and they can see what else is also being included. I believe there's also another page. It might be on the back of another. If you flip it, that goes to, yeah. So when this application process is open, it'll be open to various groups and members of the community to apply. But this just gives you a sense of the comprehensiveness of the tasks that will be associated with achieving the vision that's part of the strategic plan.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I appreciate the intentional work that was put into this, especially, I know, Jimmy, we had a conversation as well. Definitely appreciate the second section here related to the prevention and specifically around the physician education. We know that every problem has a root cause and making sure that we're all in this together and that we're not kind of, even though we're treating what's happening, are we treating where some of the issues are still persistent? And I think that is, I think we've covered the full spectrum. Obviously, it's not perfect. There's always room for where, you know, there, there needs to be more collaboration at different levels. But I think that this is the best effort that a county can lead in with curbing some of these issues. So in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burl. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick and Jimmy. I have been involved with the, not related to the dispersing the money, but the task force that was county-wide with public health, schools, county government, nonprofits, everyone involved for the past two years. I was asked to attend those meetings by the chairwoman. So this has been a long time coming. And now that the money is there to help these groups, organizations, and even the county with, like we had an item pulled on the Cope House till we can see, you know, what all needs to be done with regard to that. So I think this is a great MOU and a process that we will follow. And the task force, the advisory council will, you know, screen all the applications and make sure they meet all the requirements and all and for dispersing the money. So I think it's a good plan. I think you mentioned that once the applications go out, they have 90 days to respond.
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we have a plan for 90-day application period.
Okay. Is there any way it could be less than 90 days, maybe 60 or?
Absolutely. That's something we can take back to the council and with your advisement.
I just know that there are a lot of groups that really are looking forward to this. And I know that there's state money available too. But I'd like to see the, the process a little faster than, because it's desperately needed now.
Absolutely.
But I don't want to interrupt any requirements or procedure. But I just, you know, I thought I'd ask if there, if it could be a 60-day
Period.
turnaround.
Sure. We will take that to the council because we agree that this is important and that we get moving quickly on this.
And thank you for all the work you've done heading this up and working with legal and, and the county managers. and the County Manager's Office.
Thank you, and thank you to the council.
Thank you. Yeah. I would support that. I would just ask that there just be significant or adequate time for partnerships to occur amongst different agencies, because I know from the American Rescue Plan Act application process that some of those were quickly put together by people who already were working, you know, well together, but in some areas where partnerships needed to be strengthened to move programs along, those things were not as successful. So, there was an application process, maybe it's a two-part application process for those that could be moved forward more readily, and those other more complex projects that may take more time for those partnerships to be formed.
Right. Thank you for that input, Commissioners. One person that Nick did not mention is himself. He was the County Manager's Department. He's not a voting member. However, he is the shepherd of the sheep. He pushes, yet he understands the input of the council is very important, so I want to thank Nick as well. This strategic plan, just like our county strategic plan we approved a couple of years ago, it is a living and breathing document. After a year, if the council notices that maybe some of the categories are not being filled or requested, they will massage that, and then we will bring it back to the Board for adjustment if it's needed. So, it is a living and breathing document. But this time, we'd ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the recommendation of the opioid strategic priorities, which reflect a comprehensive, community-driven approach to addressing the opioid crisis.
All right. So moved. Second, is there any further discussion?
No discussion, but just want to thank Jimmy and Nick and the entire team for all of the work that you put in on this plan and helping our most vulnerable in Cobb County. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen. With that, we are moving on to DOT.
Good morning again. The department has four items on the regular tab for your consideration this morning. The first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under state law authorize the condemnation, excuse me, authorize commencement of condemnation proceedings on two parcels on Old Stylesborough Road at County Line Road, project number B twenty-three zero one, adopt resolutions and orders in form substantially similar to the attached and as approved by the County Attorney's Office, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries four one with Commissioner Burl in opposition.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with D&amp;H Construction Company Incorporated in amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents for drainage system repairs on Oakdale Road, project number B two-two-one-one-three, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Road Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-five dollars for drainage system repairs on Lake Somerset Crest, project number B two-two-one-three-seven, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to the contract with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company, a no-cost time extension revising the contract completion date from October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, to November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five for South Barrett Reliever Phase Three, Cobb County Project Number X twenty-four zero seven, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. And the vote carries five zero. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
We are now at our Public Services tab, and we will hear from our Parks Director.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and Madam County Manager. Parks has two items for consideration this morning. Our first item is for the Board of Commissioners to authorize the allocation and transfer of FY twenty-two, twenty-five capital contingency from the Chairwoman's office to the twenty-two Park Splash Program in support of the indoor track and Veterans Memorial Projects, both district community impact projects inside of the twenty-two Splash Program. The appropriations would be for one million dollars to the indoor track and five hundred thousand to the Veterans Memorial Project, respectively. We ask the Board of Commissioners to authorize the allocation and transfer of one-point-five million of FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five Chairwoman's capital contingency, authorize corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Yes. Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The vote carries four one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Our second item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Signal Signs of Georgia Incorporated for the entry signage replacement project under the twenty-two Park Splash Program, representing a reduction in the amount of two-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars, authorize corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I believe that takes us to Support Services, and we have one item.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Property Management has one item this morning. Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one in the amount of ten million eight-hundred-and-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-five dollars with John W. Spratlin and Son LLC to establish the final GMP in the amount of eleven million six-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-five dollars for replacement Fire Station Twelve. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. I'd first like to say thank you that this is moving forward at the new location, and it will be a great asset for Fire Station Twelve in that area. With that, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Andrew. And that takes us to our second public comment. Bill, do we have anybody signed up for the second half?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you. That then takes us to the Commissioners' public address, and we'll begin with Commissioner Gamble once the slides are on the screen.
This week in Cobb County is Public Safety Appreciation Week. You can join me in the Cobb Chamber in recognizing and appreciating the people who keep us safe and secure every day. Public Safety Appreciation Week is an opportunity for our community to honor all public safety personnel. Let's show them they are Cobb's most valuable resources. Help us celebrate these dedicated men and women with the following gestures. You can stop by a station or precinct to say thank you in person, bring handwritten thank you cards, drop off treats like donuts or cake, or gift cards to local restaurants, coffee shops, grocery stores, or gas stations. You can also surprise agencies in your area with deliveries like coffee, pizza, homemade cooked meals, or flowers. For more information on how you can show support for Public Safety Appreciation Week, you can visit thecobbchamber.org or Katie Geis at seven-seven-zero-eight-five-nine-two-three-three-four, or her email at kateguis@cobbchamber.org. And we have the return of Gamble's Great Pumpkin Contest. It is that bewitching time of year when we vote for the best Halloween design crafted by our various Cobb County departments. As you can see, three departments have submitted their entries thus so far, and we know Parks was taking a look earlier when they were up here, so we are expecting theirs. But these pumpkins help support safepath.org, and essentially, you can click on, go to their website, click on which pumpkin you like, and put a donation to, select which pumpkin you like, and the winner will be announced at the end of the month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
All right. Y'all are going to have to bear with me, because I do not have my notes with me, but we are all pink. I'm just not in pink, but you heard earlier with breast cancer awareness. To the next slide. Next up. There we go. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so certainly just want to reiterate the importance of getting screened. We have a lot of, a lot of things going on in today's world right now, and so just don't be too, don't be so involved out there. Make sure you're good. I think someone mentioned putting your oxygen mask on first. It is good to get screened, because there are loved ones connected to you, and so make sure you're prioritizing your health. From the community, we have Visit a Lawyer in the Library. The lawyer in the library offers free, brief advice on civil matters, providing guidance on a variety of legal concerns. Please note, however, that Cobb legal aid cannot assist with workers' comp, personal injury, or criminal cases. Eligibility is based on factors such as income, and legal aid is not guaranteed. Visit the lawyer in the library at the Cobb County Law Library at Seventy Haynes Street, Marietta, Georgia, three-zero-zero-nine-zero, located on the fourth floor at the Superior Courthouse, and the lawyer is available Monday through Wednesday from nine a.m. to four p.m. Take advantage of these resources. Chalktoberfest Wilds Crowd on Marietta Square. Enjoy an afternoon sampling craft beers, listening to live music, and watching professional chalk artists transform the streets into vibrant masterpieces in Marietta Square. The free event will take place ten a.m. to five p.m. Saturday, October twelfth, and eleven a.m. to five p.m. on Sunday, October thirteenth. And certainly, just reiterate, office is always open to connect with, so if you ever have any ideas, want to talk about anything on your mind, you can schedule a meeting on the calendar. Definitely, we do community huddles, so this weekend, we have the next set coming up, so make sure you mark those on the calendar if you're coming to join us. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we'll have Commissioner Burl.
As was mentioned earlier, it is Public Safety Appreciation Week, and yesterday, I had the opportunity, along with several others, to attend the Chamber Luncheon to honor our heroes. And I'm proud to say that Cobb County walked away with several awards, including Cobb County Fire Company Seven-B Shift, Sergeant William Nereo, and Thomas Weldon. So, we'd like to thank them and all of our public safety officials for their service. The next How to Do Business with Cobb Seminar is October seventeenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Senior Wellness Center. Come learn how you can do business with Cobb County and Cobb County Schools. It is free, but you do need to register, and you can email my assistant, Kimberly.Jorgensen@cobbcounty.org, or call seven-seven-zero-five-two-eight-three-three-one-seven. Also, on Wednesday, October twenty-third, the Air Force Band and Singing Sergeants will perform at the Lassiter Concert Hall located at twenty-six-oh-one Shallowford Road, Marietta. There are flyers in the back table in the lobby for, to register. It is a free concert, and I've heard that the Singing Sergeants are unbelievable. So, you definitely don't want to miss this concert. Again, it is free, but you do need to register, so pick up a flyer on your way out. Also, on November first, Friday, November first, from nine to five at the Cobb Civic Center, the Third Annual We Care Vet Fair will be presented by United Military Care from nine to five p.m. It's a great way for veterans to get assistance, benefits, and all kinds of vendors. I think they have over eighty vendors that will be on site to assist our veterans, so you don't want to miss that either.
And that's... Thank you, Commissioner. Hundred-three minutes. Yeah, thank you. Next up, we'll have Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Chair. News and updates. Looking to improve your basketball game? The Cobb Police Athletic League will host a basketball camp on Wednesday, October ninth, and Thursday, October tenth, from six p.m. to nine p.m. at Osborne High School located at two-four-five-one Favor Road in Marietta. The camp is open to youth of all skill levels, aiming to promote teamwork, discipline, and physical fitness while building positive relationships between the community and law enforcement. Participants will receive top-notch instruction from experienced coaches and police officers. Scan the QR code on your screen to register. Step into the past and experience nineteenth-century farm life at the Mabel House Harvest Festival on Saturday, October twelfth, from ten a.m. to four p.m., sponsored by the Friends of the Mabel House. The festival will take place at five-two-three-nine Floyd Road in Mabelton. You'll enjoy historical demonstration and hands-on activities like blacksmithing, pottery, butter churning, candle making, and even crafting corn husk dolls. There is also storytime and crafts for little ones, along with games, a petting zoo, and a live entertainment. Parking and entry are free, and food will be available for purchase. Come on out and experience history, fun, and community all in one place. Visit mabelhouse.org for more information. Join the city of Powder Springs for its second annual Hispanic Heritage Fiesta on Saturday, October twelfth, at Thurman Springs Park located at four-four-eight-five Pine View Drive in Powder Springs. Festivities begin at four p.m. with speakers, music, and dance celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. You'll also have the chance to explore tents dedicated to the rich history and culture of various Hispanic countries. The celebration continues at seven p.m. with concerts and dancing, so come out and enjoy a vibrant evening of culture, history, and entertainment. Mark your calendars for the South Cobb Business Association Fall Festival Networking and Business Expo that will take place on Tuesday, October fifteenth, from four p.m. to eight p.m. at Six Flags Over Georgia. The event will be held in the Gotham City area of the park, creating a unique setting for networking and business growth. Parking is free for all attendees, and you'll enter next to the Batman Stunt Show Warehouse. This is a fantastic opportunity to showcase your business, connect with other professionals, and enjoy an evening of fun and networking. Six Flags is located at two-seven-five Riverside Parkway in Mabelton. For more information and to register, visit cobbafterhours.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all of you for attending today's meeting. Congrats to our Police Department for, excuse me, for turning one hundred this year, and also want to thank everyone that's serving in public safety as we honor you this Public Safety Appreciation Week. Melissa, good job yesterday at our chamber meeting. And Deidra Watts, great job in organizing the Make-A-Wish race that took place this past weekend. It came back after a hiatus of about five or so years, and it was a great turnout and great job by everyone. With that, I hope everyone has...
And I hear you won.
Yeah, I did not win.
You're right, the forty, your age group?
Okay.
No?
I'm older, and yeah, thank you. It's supposed to be a compliment, but thank you very much. You're fast for your age. Thank you.
I'm just congratulating.
Thank you for the recognition. Yes, yes. But with that, everybody, I hope you have a wonderful rest of the day and week. Take care.[1741.51]